Okay, I'd like to call our meeting April 5th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting to order. The posted agenda stands as presented. You'll find that there's some things we're continuing on into our May meeting. Could I hear a motion to approve Jim's meeting minutes, meeting notes, I should say?
I'll move to Edna.
Second Cathy.
Second? Thank you Cathy. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good. Could I hear a motion to approve the March 15th minutes, please?
I so move.
Thank you Cathy, second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, very good. Now, I know recently you've all been receiving emails and whatnot from both Joan Winnie and from Gretchen dealing with safety training and things like that, which are required by our, apparently the town's insurance company for us to be trained not to be evil people. And I guess there are a number of ways this can be done. I guess through Zoom, or I guess there's some other streaming service, something like that. I'm kind of looking into seeing if there's something else, since I tend to get dropped a lot. Those things don't work real well for me. But apparently it's required of all volunteers and all employees for the town. If you have any questions, Joan Winnie, who's our deputy town clerk, can help you out with that. In the old days, prior to COVID, one of the towns was Hyde Park about three, two years ago, which we all gathered down in the Hyde Park Town Hall, and we went through a few hours of training on things that you probably never need to know again, and a few good things too. So, but that's the story on that. So that's why Joni's and Gretchen are sending these things around for you to sign up, find out what works best for you. Since they've not done it this way in the past, I really don't know what the format is or anything like that. But that's why it's being sent out. It's a requirement from the town's insurance company. Does anyone else have anything that they'd like to say at the moment?
Michael, I do. I think that everybody has been copied on the report that we received from Kerry Colain or the Astor Courts property. I would like us to be able to have that forwarded to the HAPAC Committee rather than wait. I think the sooner that they can get it and begin to absorb it, especially in advance of the site visit coming up in a week or so. So I don't know if we need a motion, or we just need consensus, but I think we should move that along sooner rather than later.
Okay, Melody, would you like to make a motion to that?
I so move.
Second.
Could I have a second?
That would be me.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of the board?
I think Melody's quite, I'm sorry, Michael.
Any discussions?
Sorry, I think Melody's quite right. The committee needs time to absorb all this information, even though we've seen the prior work, but still, I think the sooner we can do this, the better.
Thank you Cathy.
Oh, we just lost Michael, I think. I was just gonna note, for the planning board members that are online, we do have the site visit set up for next Friday. So make sure you have that on your calendars. You should be all set and ready to go, and you'll be getting additional details on that as we pull those together. As I work with the applicant.
Okay, did we vote while I was down? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're ready for our first public hearing. Basically, it's gonna be a resolution to continue until May 3rd at 6:35 PM. We just received a letter from the Board of Health, a three-page letter of requirements that the applicant, Mr. Pinto and his engineer, have to meet before the Board of Health can really assess their SDS plan. So they're not ready for us yet, and they've requested us to continue the public hearing to May 3rd at 6:35 PM. Could I hear a motion to do so?
So move, Melody.
Second?
Second Cathy.
Thank you Cathy. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Just Michael.
All right, I hope that everyone voted in favor.
Yes.
Three times already tonight, Melody. You may be taking over this meeting very shortly. We're seeming to be having trouble out here in the hinterlands. Okay. And now for our next public hearing, Joel Herm, a number of neighbors have submitted letters, which I hope you've all had a chance to read. And I think they're also, I think we'll have to be discussing tonight with the applicant. It's also a number of variants that the applicant requires to cite the hydro plant, since it's on, the setback is, doesn't meet the setback requirement for the district that he's in, and therefore he's gonna need a variance. And that generally takes two to three meetings, which could mean, I think he's before the ZBA, or was before the ZBA at their last meeting. It's usually three meetings they meet once a month, so it's gonna be a little while before he's gonna be in a position to, even if we approve it, to move forward with this project. So we do have some time to look into some of these concerns that neighbors have for this. So I hope you've all had a chance to read those. If you haven't, or for some reason you didn't get them, please let us know so we can get them to you. Because they are, they are significant. One of the neighbors lives right to the north of Joel's property, and the other is right to the
We lost Michael.
Which, as I was saying, is the line running down between Mr. Nelson's property and now the Mattel property. Is an old town road that's been abandoned, and it goes back and forth between the two people's properties, both Nelson and Mattel, or I should say between Mattel and Herm. And Mattel is concerned that it would be used for the trucks, things like that, which has happened in the past. I prefer to not see that happen. The approved driveway for Mr. Herm is over on the other side of his property going down to his house. It's the one that those of us who did the site visit, that was the, that is the approved driveway for that property. And I think 6:40, so I think we're in time now to start our public hearing for Joel Herm at 443 Mill Road, Site Plan Special Use Permit and Wetland Permit for Micro Hydro Generator. So Joel, I guess you're here to take us through your project.
Sure. As you may know, the dam that is on the property was put in by the Sukleys back in 1889, specifically for hydroelectricity to power the Wilderstein Mansion. And it did supply electricity to the mansion for 20 or so years, until a central coal-fired electricity plant came in in the early 20th century. So we wish to take the existing dam, not do anything to it, and just put in a very simple turbine generator, which is made by an American company out in Ohio, and basically just bolting it on to the existing low-level outlet that is required for proper dam maintenance, and run the electricity that's generated by the turbine generator underground up to our newly finished passive house. And the electricity will be behind the meter, which means the electricity will not be connecting to the Central Hudson Grid. The calculations of the amount of energy that will, electricity that will be generated in a given year, given the flow of the Landsman Kill, should supply all of our household electricity needs. But we will be able to go to, switch over to Central Hudson electricity, should there be a problem with the turbine generator, or we need to do, you know, occasional maintenance on the system. So that's it. In a nutshell, you can see there on the bottom artist's concept of what the device will look like. It's basically just 18-inch tube that will extend from an existing low-level outlet. And the outflow from the turbine system will go right at the toe of the downstream side of the dam.
Okay, thank you Joel.
Sure.
I think Edna and I did the site visit. Edna, would you like to, I know that you had some comments you wish to make, some observations?
Yeah, Jim, I sent three photos through. It would be nice if the rest of the board could get an idea of what the site looked like.
I'm bringing them up on the screen right now.
You can see in this photo, the dam and behind it, the house. So the trench, which I understand will be about two and a half feet deep, will follow along the left side of the dam all the way to the house to carry the wire. It was extremely muddy and wet when Michael and I were there. The area around the dam itself, on the side we were standing, was extremely muddy and wet. So preserving the Landsman Kill, making sure that muddy water is not going to flow into it, will be very important all along the trench. I think we can go to the second photo. This is another view. This shows the concrete that was poured some time ago that makes up the, what I'll call the left side of the dam. And on the right side, you'll see what I think is the original stone. As I understand it, that bell-shaped thing that's below the dam there is the generator. Is that correct, Joel?
No, that is a side discharge valve.
Okay.
That was put in in 1889.
And that will remain, is that correct?
Yeah, it's non-functional, and it's not required for the new system.
Okay, we can move to the third photo. This shows the rest of the concrete work that was done. So I think that pretty much describes what we saw. There was no discussion while we were there of the construction of the concrete area of the dam. Michael, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I know that the construction was a question. I know that the DEC had approved their work. I do believe in hindsight, a wetland permit and site plan should have been received from the town, but there was a lot of discussion and uncertainty about that, and it didn't happen. I do think one of the things that I think we all felt is that the site down there by the water was very, very muddy all along there. And any approval would have to include a planting plan to stabilize that area with appropriate plant material, to ensure that, as you point out, that we're not, you know, putting mud into the Landsman Kill through this area. I think in the interim, and certainly while the electrical conduit is being laid, I think it's vital that there be, you know, proper provision taken to prevent any, any sort of sediment from going down, silt fencing, possibly hay bales, things of that sort, to stabilize the area and to prevent any silt, other materials from running into the Landsman Kill until the plantings that would take place have taken hold and actually can then take over the job of stabilizing that area. I think those are two things that we didn't see on the, on the proposed plans that we have been able to review, which I think are something, are two necessities, which I think would have to be part of any approval that we do. Other than that, in recent few days, we've received two letters. I'm sorry, Joel?
Michael, I just wanted to add, before we leave the subject of protection of the stream, that there is generally a slope toward the stream all along that trench. And so the kind of protection I think is important. I'm not sure a silt fence would be sufficient. I think hay bales might work better.
Possibly a combination of both.
Right.
Our professional engineer stamped a drawing, has put in the silt fencing that is required down pretty close to the photo that we're looking at right now. There's also an engineer's note about putting in the 600 or 700, I forget how long it is, six or 700-foot trench up to the house will be done in two days' time, and it'll be immediately backfilled and covered with woodchips, which is already on the path that we're using, that, you know, you saw when you were at the site visit with the blue flags. So of course, we have a concern about doing anything about the inducing turbidity into Landsman Kill. And indeed, we've been waiting for mid-April here to do grass planting on the mud that we're looking at now. We couldn't do it beforehand.
Okay, I think that's it. I think the planting plan of what you're putting in, both herbaceous grasses, things like that, as well as probably some woody material for their root systems, because as I think Edna correctly points out, the way the land does slope down to the Landsman Kill would probably be a good combination and a good way to ensure that the slope doesn't slough off in heavy rains like we have been getting of late. And I think that would, a planting plan along those lines would be very helpful as the, as the planning board considers the application.
Could we go back to pictures real quick? I just have a question of where the power is gonna be running, and does that cross the river or stream?
No.
No.
Okay.
Follows the left side of the stream all the way back up to the house.
Yeah, hi Sean, Joel here. It's well-marked on the site plan where the line is gonna run.
I think I know the answer to this, but just, I've read through everything, but just to, so I fully grasp just the infrastructure process, really other than the trench being dug and the conduit, you know, piping. Is there any other sort of invasive, invasive part of the, minimally invasive part of this procedure? I mean, that's really the predominant infrastructure that has to go in. It's just the trenching, right?
That's correct. The turbine generator itself is, as we stated in the application, there is no excavation or work in the stream itself. So of course, we don't want to induce any turbidity into Landsman Kill when we're putting in the infrastructure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Michael, there were two CAB members at the site visit?
Yes. They submitted a report. We have a representative of the CAB here to just give the, go over their report and respond to any questions anyone might have. I take it we don't? I hope everyone had an opportunity to read Craig's report that he sent out. He joined us on the site visit.
Hi.
Well, Craig is here.
Yes, you are here Craig.
Hi. Sorry, I don't have the report in front of me, but I can, I can speak to anything that anyone was confused about.
Were there any specific aspects of the project that you thought needed maybe a little closer look, or that you felt were potential problems, but that had been addressed by the applicant?
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, what everybody's saying about the turbidity is really the central concern. And whatever measures were taken previously, as far as woodchips and that sort of thing, I don't think they were effective. So, you know, if this is to go forward, I think there needs to be exceptional care taken with the trenching operation while it's going on. It needs to be performed carefully. And also, you know, any, any or anchorages into stone, you know, that, that work needs to proceed carefully as well.
Of course.
And I'm just speaking certainly for myself, as I pointed out, I would like to see a good detailed planting plan of both herbaceous and woody material to stabilize that, that bank of the, of the Landsman Kill, because a lot of it is rather steep and I think certainly prone to wash out. And I think that trying to stabilize it with plant material along those lines and seeing a good planting plan would be very helpful.
Which?
Other questions from the members right now from the planning board? I'm sorry, Joel?
Which part of the bank specifically?
The area that's running up along the creek, which was very muddy while we were there, and the area as you're going through the trench, woodchips will help, but in a heavy rain, that's gonna wash as well. I mean, it's a very heavy claim.
No, the wood, the wood.
You have down there.
The woodchips are only over the line of the transmission line. I totally agree with you that, in fact, I've been dealing with the Tribs, Trees for Tribs DEC lady. She's supposed to be coming out when she gets a chance to see if she has any other plantings other than the native ones that I'm already planning on putting in, but I'll certainly add those to the plan.
That would, that would be good. Thank you. There were two letters. I don't know, is Mr. Nelson there, Mr. Mattel here? Jim, perhaps they'd like to speak to their letters?
If anyone would like to, you can unmute yourself or put a comment in the comment box.
May I speak?
Dr. Nelson, sure.
Thank you. I think my letter is exceptionally thorough, so I certainly don't want to go over it again. However, there is a threshold question which the planning board needs to be comfortable with, and that's one for your attorney, as to whether there is a legal entitlement to do what Mr. Herm is asking permission to do. And that's between the planning board and council, assuming that it is legally permissible and within what is okay in Landsman Kill. My only request is that if the planning board chooses to approve the project, as it is now or modified, that you condition it upon the assertions that have been presented to you, namely that the electricity to be generated is an amount sufficient to operate a one-bedroom house. Second, that the system not be connected to Central Hudson or any other utility. And third, that this not become a business, that you're not giving permission for the sale of the facility. And as you'll see in my letter, there's reason to raise that, a very valid reason to raise it. If all of those conditions are, since they've been put forth to you, if they're part of approval, then my only other concern is what I share with my neighbor, Mr. Mattel, and that is, you know, the use of the former Fox Hollow Road for equipment, for vehicles. There is an approved driveway. That's what should be used. The, the, I think my letter is longer than it needs to be, but it presents you with the detail you need to understand the basis for my concern. And I thank you for the opportunity to, to make that input.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Is there a representative, Mr. Mattel, here to talk?
This is, hi, this is Nick. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. No, with regards to my letter, it was just, one was a question. There was two points that I made in my letter. One was simply a question with regards to the noise coming, you know, emanating from the microhydro generator once it's installed. I didn't have a feel for that, you know, when we bought the property, listening to the sound of the stream was one of the selling features. So certainly, so that was something I was just asking a question about, was what was it? And what was, you know, what would it be? What would it sound like? What is permissible? Just not having any information based on that, that was a simple question. And then second, and then the only other, you know, point that I raised was that I know that there, the, the abandoned Fox Hollow Road toggles between my property and Mr. Herm's property. And, you know, I know that he has an easement for, you know, so a right of way to, for his personal use, but that any work related to this project was certainly beyond the scope of that. And so this abandoned road should not be used. I know that there had been some concerns, or my understanding was that there had been some concerns about that in the past. And so I just wanted to make sure that I understood what would, you know, what would happen on that side. You know, beyond that, just as Mr. Herm was on my public process, you know, and supportive of my right to build, I, I understood his, his rights and desires to do something environmentally friendly as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joel, I guess the one, the question about the sound of the generator versus the ambient, you know, sound of the water coming over the dam rushing down and all. Perhaps you can speak to that. I know that we do have sound regulations in the town as to decibel levels during day and at night, and it certainly would have to be within, within those allowed limits. But perhaps you can speak to your understanding of the sound generated by the generator, the hydro generator, let's say, when it's working at peak efficiency?
Running at peak efficiency, it runs around 52, 53 decibels. The sound level at the cascading spillway itself is 90 decibels. At the property line to the south and west, which is the closest one to the ambient sound of the 90 decibels, decrement's down to, I think it's around 65 at that property line. And Nick and Preta, if you're on, I did take a decimal reading at your property line in between the spillway and your house at the prop, at your, at our joint property line. It was 50 decibels with just the spillway sound that goes from 90 down to 50 at the property line. So, you know, the way sound works, it's not gonna be additive. In other words, you know, if you take something that's already creating 90 decibels at the spillway and add a generator that's making 52, 55 decibels, you're not gonna get 145 at the property line. So it's gonna be exactly what you paid for, which is at the property line, 50 decibel sound reading. As to the easement and the toggling of the property line in between our properties, we do have a case in front of the county court Case in front of the county court with Ms. Boucher, who you bought it from. So I suggest, Nick, that we sit down and have a cup of coffee and. Talk this out as opposed to us going forward with the lawsuit.
I guess I would, I would only add to that is that I know when we did the division for Mary Meyerson, who originally did the subdivision of the property, which. Divided up the property there and the old Fox Hollow Road was not. A approved as access to your property. And that's why you, you have the other approved driveway that's further to the. What is that northwest? No, nor whatever it is, where your actual driveway is off the road.
Of course.
There's another question. Yeah, there's another question as to whether or not a vehicle access to curb cut for the old Fox Hollow Road is still permitted. Under either town or county regulations to be used for motor vehicles of any sort. The easement certainly allows access to the landsman kill, but that may well be limited to pedestrian access, something like that, non mechanized access. So that's something we're going to have to look, look into. I'm sorry.
Which I have and. The entrance to the Fox Hollow Access Road is not. The town doesn't have standing there that is totally the county road at that point. And I have gone down and sat down with the highway engineer. Down in Poughkeepsie and we talked about. Whether I needed to put in access permit and he said, no, it's been there for over two hundred years. The sightlines are safe. And he said, the county has no issue with using that for basically a. A rural farm access, a curb cut, quote unquote, especially since it's been there for several hundred years. So. And the easement that we have with you, Nick. States that we can use the full road width. For any residential purpose and. As you know, Bert, this is. Microhydro generator being put in for. Non-commercial use, but residential use to power our new home. So. Go ahead.
No, you go, I didn't mean to.
That's okay. Go ahead.
I was going to ask if you can get a letter from the county saying that they, since it's a county road, they approved that curb cut to be used. For mechanized, motorized vehicles for us to have in the file, that would be very helpful.
Sure, no problem.
I have a question.
And, but you, you just want that for your files or is there some legal requirement for that letter, Michael?
Well, right now, when we did the subdivision, the only approved access to the road that the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board approved. Was the driveway, your, your legal driveway right now. And the other Fox Hollow Road was discussed, but it was determined it would not be permitted. As access to the property under the subdivision. So if, since the county is allowing a. Curb cut there for vehicular access, there are a number of other places, older abandoned roads, which are just for pedestrian use now. They're no longer. Allowed from mechanic for motorized vehicles. If the county feels that this is, that they have no problem, they're willing to approve it as a curb cut. For motorized vehicles of that's something that I think we really need to have in our file because it is a recurring question that keeps coming up. And as you say, since it goes to the county road, I know the town, town, county line in terms of the jurisdiction over the road. Happens right in that area. But since it's in the county side, I think we need to have some written approval from the county saying that they recognizing how the town. Approved the other thing as the driveway did not approve this as access to the property, that they are willing to still permit that to be used as access. I mean, it was a town road, not a county road. So I think that we need to have something in the file to finally hopefully. Resolve or to some extent try to resolve at least the access onto the road from the old Fox Hollow Road.
To be clear, we're not asking for the Fox Hollow Legacy Curb Cut to be considered for. A driveway because, you know, I think it is in town code, right, Michael, that you can. In RA ten, you can only have one driveway. So we're not asking for a second driveway, but it just seems. Like for. A few. Vehicles a year. But I'll get you the letter from the county and we'll go from there and Nick, feel free to give me a call.
Yeah, sure. I guess you had mentioned the, the lawsuit and I certainly knew. Of a lawsuit, the, the, you know, intangential terms between you and the previous owner.
Right.
But I wasn't. A, a, a party to that. I did not believe. Now you're saying that it is still active. You're implying that it is still active because you said that there's an active, there's a pending lawsuit.
Correct.
But. So are you, so are you saying that it's an active lawsuit? Because in that case, should we look to resolve this before? Should the case be resolved before there's your approval and stuff, just so that there's no misunderstanding?
Well, I think the easement issue is separate from the microhydro application, but. Yeah, I would love to sit down with you, Nick, and just work this out because it's kind of silly, I think, but. I, I think the.
But aren't you also saying, right, I totally agree with you. Your microhydro is, is separate from the easement, except for it seems like you're saying you intend to use the. The, the easement to facilitate the microhydro and so they are tied up together.
Well, and other residential purposes. I mean, we, like you, but our property with certain. Understandings about the qualities of our property, one of them. Before we signed the deal with Mary was looking at that. Easement because. You know, we, we do have. Forestry going on on our property. You probably have seen the saw logs that we have. So having those sun up for lumber is certainly a residential. Purpose that we would certainly need, you know, portable saw. Mill to come in and, you know, take advantage of, you know, the. Trees that are on our property. So there are way more purposes for having acts, a rural access road for. Forestry or grounds maintenance or. Who knows what, as long as it's residential, because that's very clearly stated in the easement, that it has to be a residential purpose. And I have no intention on becoming a. Tree seller or any or electricity seller on this particular property. It's all residential.
Joel, Michael, th- this is Jim leaving from, playing from places. Now that we're aware of the fact that there is a pending lawsuit for. An access, a potential access to utilize the property and actually work on this project in particular, I think we need to get clarification. From the planning board attorney that this can move forward. I don't think this project can move forward if there's an access dispute. That's the primary, you know, hold on, hold on, Joel, the primary way to get access to the project. If Joel were to comment from the other direction. Then I don't know if there would be an issue, but the pending lawsuit I do think does raise a new issue that, that I wasn't aware of. In terms of the ability for the planning board to approve this, at least to be able to use that access to get there. And that, that's my opinion again. I would recommend. We talked to John Lyons to confirm, but, but I don't believe we can, we can move forward with an approval over something that has a pending lawsuit for access.
I'll be totally, I, I agree with you. I understand where you're coming from. This has gone on long enough that if you want to make the approval of the microhydro conditional on. My guaranteeing you that all construction equipment and the turbine itself. And all the materials required to make the installation will come from. The approved driveway. I'm fine with that. I don't need the access road to put in the microhydro. So I'm fine with making that stipulation and you can come here when we're doing it, you know, for eyes on to verify. I'm fine with that, but. Please do not hold up the microhydro, which is going to put on ultra clean electrons into our house. To help fight the climate change.
Oh, yeah, I understand where you're coming from, Joel. I'm just making sure we need to do things, you know, the way we need to. So if that's, if that's, you know, if that's what you're proposing is you'll change the access, I think that does. Help clarify that issue. Since we are going to still be waiting on your approval from the ZBA, we have a little time. It would be nice to get that in writing. From you that you're going to change the.
Oh, absolutely.
To which you'll access the property. Perspective, that will help clarify.
There are several things that are going on simultaneously that allow us to be in touch with John Lyons. You know, you're going to be getting something from the county. We're going to be looking for a landscaping plan. So, and you're waiting on this EBA. So there's no harm in us conferring with John Lyons. That we're not taking an action that we shouldn't be taking.
Is that? Legal cause something that goes against my account? What the Lions work. It's just curious.
Yes, his, his time, his time would be consultant time like mine. Yeah. I don't think it'll be, I don't think it'll be like, sorry, Michael, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say I will do my best to get ahold of John in the next day or two. I have a number of issues I wish to raise with him and I will add this to the list. So this, this will not hold up. Our processing of the application, although as Melody points out, there are a couple of other elements we're going to need. And as I said, the ZBA usually meets over three meetings to deal with a. Use area of variance and they only meet once a month. So we, we definitely do have time to work this through and get these issues resolved. Or probably well before the ZBA is going to come to resolution of your variance application.
If, if indeed the county affirms what you said in terms of the, of the use of that entrance. That leads me to ask questions about who's going to maintain it since we know that this driveway toggles back and forth. So there's, that opens up some other questions for me in terms of, of it. If it does become a legal entrance or remains a legal entrance, then who maintains it? Who's got jurisdiction over it? I don't have the answer to that.
Are there other members of the public who have questions or comments they'd like to make, Jim?
Like we have a comment in the chat. Yes, Mr. Trupko, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. I'm Peter Trappco, neighbor of. Joel and Susan Alkon and. I'm a registered architect and I've read through all of his materials that he submitted, very. Large amount of materials. The, the center point of what I'm raising does also have to do with the acoustics of the. Other proposed work. My understanding about a microhydro. Generator is that there is a. A. A certain building that is this distributing part. For, for the, where the, where the, the powerhouse from which the. Generator works. I don't believe that anything that has been submitted says that there will not be a powerhouse. And perhaps I, I'm misconstruing something, but in the information that was submitted, there was a proprietary. Information about showing a powerhouse. The question would be, what is the structure of the powerhouse? That is an easy enough matter to, you know, when you do a massive construction to make it. Make it. Be. So that the, the noise on the inside does not go to the outside. The other thing is. While I am completely aware of the fact that you don't add decibels upon decibels, I think that there. Will be some additional acoustical problem. Not, not a problem, but some additional acoustical issues. And I would just underscore that, that. That. Should be and ought to be something of interest to the planning board to resolve further. Joel has mentioned many things about this, but I must respectfully say that there are some of them that are not. Completely addressed. We live about a, we live probably as the crow flies about. Eight to nine hundred feet from where the proposal for the. For the, for the turbine is going to be, sound travels very quickly. And if there's going to be a powerhouse. I don't know whether there will be, but it ought to be enclosed in a certain kind of way. I hope that that's not too elliptical, what I'm saying, but I do respect, I, I do expect it to be. A consideration for the, for the planning board and for Mr. Hearn.
Thank you. Joel, do you wish to respond or comment or?
There is no powerhouse for this tiny little turbine generator.
There is a transformer. Is that correct, Joel? A cabinet size transformer.
Yes, correct.
Would be probably close to a tree that's close to the falls. Why don't you describe that?
It's a. There you go. Thank you. It's a little monolith, NEMA. Cabinet like you see. Alongside a traffic signal box at a stoplight. NEMA, meaning that it's a weatherproof electrical cabinet essentially. And it's about. Six or seven inches thick and about two and a half feet wide and about six feet high. So it'll look like the monolith in two thousand and one.
And will it emit a noise?
No. No more than the transformer that's on Peter's. You know, utility pool. A lot less actually because, you know, those are much higher voltages, but. It certainly will be well within the bounds of the sound code of Rhinebeck.
No, thank you. Would it be possible for the board to see a copy or an, an image of that? Little object that is. Whatever size.
Sure, I'll, I'll send you a cut sheet from a NEMA cabinet, from a catalog. Is that what you'd like?
Well, I, I. That is always appreciated, but it's my notion that that would be something of interest to the board in general.
Well, certainly included in the file for the application.
Hey, Joel, this is Craig Olshesky of the CAB.
Craig.
How is that, how is that panel going to be mounted? Does it sit on a footing? Is it mounted on a pole? How is it stuck into the ground?
You know, like any other, like. Residential meter, you know, just be on a four by four post treated post into the ground.
Okay, it's not going to be CCA treated, is it?
CCA? Well, actually, I, I was hoping to use. Some of the black locust locks that I have and which makes very good natural posts, but I would have to. Have a sawmill come down that access road.
Okay, and you've done a pretty significant amount of cutting. And that.
Those are all dead trees.
Okay, well, they're dead now.
And they were dead, so.
Have they, have they, have they all been replanted? Have you planted, you know, new trees in the, in their, in their place? Have they, have they, have they all been replanted? Have you planted, you know, new trees in the, in their, in their place?
Uh, you know, there are always volunteers in the under canopy that are coming up just fine. And as you saw when you were there, I did transplant. Uh, uh, some volunteer, uh, second more trees. Basically along the path where the, um, uh, underground transmission line will be. And like I said earlier, I am working with the trees for trib's, uh, program.
That could certainly be helpful with your planting plan.
Exactly.
Stabilizing the, uh.
Yeah. Yeah. She and I have talked several times at several different conferences, uh, over the years.
Other questions from planning board members? Uh, anyone else from the public have questions or comments they'd like to make tonight? Okay. What I'd like to do is continue this public hearing. To, I believe it would be our May 3rd meeting, Gretchen, if you could tell me when this would be.
Yes. At 6:45.
May 3rd at 6:45.
Okay.
Could I hear a motion to do so?
So move melody.
Second? Thank you. I'd love, all in a favor, please say aye, aye. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
So you get the information to us, the better, you know, the people have a chance to read and absorb.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too. Bye.
Okay. Our next public hearing is Mike's Tree Service Site Plan Review Business Office. Is the applicant, applicant representative here?
Uh, yes, Mark Verminsky and Seth Stickler here.
Mike here.
You want to take us through, Mark, what's being proposed?
Sure. Uh, Jim, can you, um, pull up the drawings, please? Let's, um. You know, if you want to, that's the, uh, what you have now is our, our revised submission. So I think, I think I can go through everything, uh, based on that revised submission. It covers all the, um, of, of the details. Um, so, uh, uh, I'm here, it's Mark from Metzke. I'm here representing M R D. What is it? M R G? M R D Tree Services, um, for an application for, uh, a tree service. A, um, uh, post, uh, uh, office building associated with it. Uh, the property is located on the northwest side of, of Route 9. Uh, parcel size is just a little bit less than an acre. It's 0.995 acres. And, um, a- along with the application to, uh, the planning board. Um, application has, is, has also been made, uh, to the town of Rhinebeck ZBA. Uh, New York State DOT and the Dutchess County Department of Health. Um, uh, with regard to the, uh, application to the ZBA, as we go through, uh, our explanation of the, uh, of the site plan. Uh, a request has been made to, um, the ZBA for a area variance for front yard setback. And, um, uh, that front yard setback is, is in line with. Other buildings that, that currently exist on the northwest side of, of, of Route 9. Uh, there are, a- a- along with, uh, materials that have been submit, submitted, part of the original submission. Uh, it includes, uh, information and an aerial overlay, uh, showing the, uh, location of the various, uh, structures. And businesses that exist, uh, to the north of this particular site. Um. With regard to, uh, application to the New York State DOT, obviously it's, uh, access is required from a state highway. And so, um, the applicant in this office has met with a representative of DOT. Uh, regarding, uh, access, uh, configuration and geometric requirements for. Um, uh, for the, uh, specific, uh, access to the property. Uh, as I said, that application's been made and we are awaiting, um. Uh, confirmation from, uh, New York State DOT. Also, um, uh, I, I mentioned, uh, application has been made to the Dutch County Department of Health also. And so this particular, uh, property not served by central water sewer, uh, is requiring, uh, um. Review and approval for, uh, individual water supply and also wastewater disposal. Um, and so awaiting comments from, uh, the health department on that. Uh, starting on Route 9 and, uh, taking you into the site, site access will be on the northern portion. Uh, of the site, uh, you can see from this, uh, plan that Jim has up, there's the, uh, you know, uh, the DOT access. Uh, on the, on the north side of the, of the proposed building. And, um, you, as you enter the site, there's going to be a parking area and this, uh, in this section. I'll also note for the, uh, for the access and treatment of the surfaces, uh, this section of the, um. Of the proposal includes pavement, um, uh, for, obviously for the DOT access and for that parking area. And that parking area, there are some, uh, through accesses on the south. Of the, uh, of, of the parking north side of the building with some parking spaces across from that. And, um, then as you go and, and those parking spaces will be, will be used for, um. The, uh, the, uh, the office use that's associated with this, uh, project. And so it's either. Um, it's either, uh, you know, it's a business service or a business or professional use. Uh, for the, uh, for the, a portion of the structure, obviously the other portion of the structure will be for Mike's Tree Service. And then as you continue west, uh, into the property, uh, there's, there'll be an area that has been, uh, designed for. Uh, storage of outdoor storage of, um, the existing, uh, vehicles that are associated with, uh, with Mike's Tree Service. And, um, and you can see on the, when you look at the plan, there are elongated and large, uh, spaces for those. Uh, vehicles and equipment associated with the tree surface. Um, in addition to that, if you look on the south side of the building, there's a, there's a, uh, uh, south side of the building and south side of the site. There's a parking area that has been, uh, designated for employees and also, uh, for use of, uh, maneuvering the vehicles. Uh, onsite. Uh, as, as I mentioned, there's some outdoor, uh, storage of the, uh, vehicles and equipment associated with the tree service. There's also on the, will be on the west side of the building, uh, there, there are, are garage doors that will allow for, um, uh, storage and. Um, some minor maintenance of the, uh, of the equipment and the vehicles. And so they, uh, and those doors are located on the west side of the building. When you're, uh, looking at the, um, uh, when you're looking at the site plan, uh, you can also see that. Um, on the, uh, northwest, excuse me, southwest, uh, corner of the property. Uh, that areas that has been designated for onsite sewage disposal, which I mentioned earlier. Uh, there is also a, um, there's a proposed shed, uh, just for, uh, you know, a, a storage shed that's located adjacent to that. And then, uh, as I said before, there'll be, um, you know, location, uh, we, we need, uh, one of the requirements is, uh, water supply. And so that, uh, the well, uh, is being proposed for, it's actually the northeast corner of the property. Jim's circling that right now. Uh, those have been determined, uh, just, uh, based on, uh, set, uh, this site development and also consideration of. Uh, adjoining wells and septics that are, um, that exist, uh, to the north, um. North of the property. Um, so in development of this site, um. There's three other things that I want to discuss. So it's, you know, the stormwater management, uh, on the property. Um, and lighting and landscaping. So I'll start with stormwater management. Um, you can see through the, uh, development of, uh, of the site grading, there's, uh, all, all stormwater is contained on the site. And ultimately, um, uh, uh, discharges along the existing drainage patterns that exist right now. And so there are two stormwater management areas that have been, uh, designed and, um. Included as part of the, uh, development of the, of the site plan, uh, starting on this, near the south southeast corner. You can see it's a. It's an X-hatched area, uh, for collection and treatment of, uh, stormwater, uh, basically on the west side of Route 9 and it continues south. Uh, the same, if you go to the west, to the westerly property line, about in the midpoint, uh, the same thing holds true. Um, you know, the site grading has been developed in such a way to, um. Uh, to direct that stormwater into these, uh, you know, small, uh, retention areas, uh, rain garden type, uh, designs for. Um, you know, developing the, uh, uh, you know, the stormwater management and consideration of the green infrastructure. Um, you know, for the overall site. Um, next, I'll, um, just briefly mention, uh, lighting, uh, monitor lighting, uh, on the site, it's all associated. Uh, with the building and, um, those fixtures are shown, uh, on the west side of the, um. Uh, the building where, where those, uh, garage doors are, one on the south, and then there's also one on the north. Um, there's some, oh, I'm sorry. And then there's also some lighting associated, uh, with the, uh, parking area. So that's located on the. Uh, north side of the parking area. Uh, detailed lighting information has also been included. Uh, in the site plan and details relative to, to that lighting are, are also have been, uh, are, are shown on this plan that, uh, Jim's working from. And then, uh, finally, uh, landscaping, uh, so landscaping has been, uh, developed twofold. Uh, both, uh, through vegetation and through some fencing. And so based on, uh, our initial meeting, uh, with this board, uh, there's been a, you know, a change to the. Uh, detail for fencing that's, that's now included. It's, it's more of a stockade type fence, uh, that's going to be, originally it was, uh, changing. It's never been, um, modified to a stockade wood fence, uh, located. You know, essentially along the perimeter, um, the, uh, um. You know, in, in, uh, but spoke, it would be the northeast corner and south and nor, and south, southeast corner of the building. And then also bracketing, uh, in the areas of, you know, trying to maintain some screening. Uh, you know, uh, and visibility from Route, Route 9 and adjoining properties. There's also, uh, detailed landscaping that's shown. I'll start on the south side near that southeast, southeast corner of the building. There's, uh. A detailed, uh, detail of some specific landscaping in that area. And then also, if you go on the north side of the building, uh, north of the, uh, proposed parking area. Uh, that, uh, there's a detailed, uh, landscaping associated with that. Um, in addition to, um. Uh, you know, the site plan, uh, which I have just described, um, the applicant has retained. Um, architects to, uh, o- obviously provide, uh, design information, uh, for the building. And they have also done some, uh, renderings associated with the project. So at this time I'd like to, uh, uh, I'm assuming, are they, are they on? Uh.
Steve Mazurelli.
Steve from Mazurelli, are, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Steve, maybe you could just take the board through, uh, the work that you've done.
Okay, if, um, if you want to look at the two dimensional drawings or, or the 3D. Uh, we can talk to, uh, either. So there's, there's the two dimensional drawings. Um, last time, you know, some of the comments were, they thought it was a little too Adirondacky. Um, what we've done is we've eliminated some of the, the brackets on the front, the, um. The ornamental brackets we had in the gable ends. We've added an additional rakeboard to give it a more of a, uh, barnish feel. And, um. We, we've kept it with, um. It's got one side, one type of siding instead of two before we had horizontal and vertical siding. And, um. We have a rendering that, that, uh, will also match this two dimensional drawing here. That will show you the, the, the colors as well as the views from the north and south ends. So. So this top view is if you're driving southbound down Route 9. And then the lower, and, and also we added, um. Some of the vehicles in the back. I know there was some concern. I don't know if it was the planning board or the zoning board that had some concerns about the, uh. What we were going to see during the day with trucks behind the building. So we added some vehicles similar in size to Mike's fleet. So you'll be able to see, uh, i- if the trucks are in the yard during the day, that's what you're going to see.
Okay. I have a, I have a question about the fencing itself. Wooden fencing. Is it going to be, uh, installed in such a way that so that's, let's say a half inch or whatever? Gap between the boards, so it's not a privacy fence?
Uh, yes, Michael. So i- in that, um, Gretchen actually, uh, reached out to me and, um. I was, uh, and I, you know, went through your, the code and I, I understand what you're speaking to. So yes, it will be. There will be a small gap between the vertical, uh, members of that, uh, fence so that there is, I guess, uh, daylight. How's that? Daylight between, uh, other members.
Very good. Thank you.
And we'll, uh, we'll reinforce that with a note on the plans on that specific detail.
Okay, that, that would be good. Thank you.
Uh, may I ask, is it time for questions?
Uh, you can certainly ask.
Could, could we go back to the elevations, the three dimensional elevations?
Yep. Give me one second. I'll get back to that.
The. The illustration shows. The illustration shows, um. Mature trees essentially wrapping what looks like part of the south and the western. And then also the northern part of this. Are those trees in place or are those trees going to be planted?
There is some existing tree line. Um, we did it to enhance the renderings. Uh, but those, those trees that are to the, I'm going to say to the west. And the, the north and south ends, those are just, you know, in- instead of us going out, we, we kind of showed a mass in the lower rendering. Uh, the mass of the, the, uh, commercial structure next door. But without us going out and actually locating every tree and doing that, we, we added trees. Just for the rendering for the effect.
But the question is, will this effect be there in real life?
And, uh, and if I could, Jim, if you could go, if you could, uh, because we submitted a photo, uh, existing photo. With, uh, if you go page down, here we go. Yeah, if you could maybe enlarge that a little bit. Right. So, and those, those, those mature trees exist to the west. And then also, if you look in the left side of that photo, they wrap around, uh, to the, I guess on the south side.
Do they come all the way to the road?
No, they do not.
At, at, at what point do they stop?
There's a hedgerow, um, I would either, there's a hedgerow along that entire south boundary.
Right.
And as far as like the exact location of mature trees, I'd have to. Um. You know, uh, let's see, and that total line is 265 feet. I think, there you go. Perfect.
Yes.
Right? So you can see that they extend the majority of that. Um, uh, you know, that's just that last, say, 50 feet. Uh, you know, that's just that last, say, 50 feet right by the utility pole, a little short.
And this, this might be a good time for Joe and I to do our site visit for, uh?
I was actually gonna chime in and say that, I was, Michael, I was gonna say that on the north side, I don't re- remember any sort of trees or, or shrubs. On the, on the south side, it, as you see from that picture, it's shorter hedges with a couple of taller trees.
Correct.
Like the rendering.
That's right. And then on the north side, all you see is, uh, Mavis, it's Mavis Tire, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Mavis Tire. But in this case, so now we have which, uh, I guess, one of the features of the site plan is the building, and I state that building out. Um, there's the four corners of the building are staked out. Uh, that's going to obscure the view of, of the, uh, Mavis Tire and then the, uh, what would be to the west of Mavis Tire.
Mark, before you, before we go any further, there's a quick question about the address of this, but I think you just explained it. It's next to Mavis Tire. And we're across from, not quite from the lumberyard, right?
Oh, yeah, I missed that on the, on the opening, on my opening remarks. Yes, it's basically across from, uh, Williams Lumber, uh, and, uh, to the south of Mavis Tire.
Alright, thanks.
As I said, Joe and I did, did do a site visit. So I don't know if you want to give your thoughts first and I'll follow up or?
Yeah, I, I think besides just the, the, the comment about the existing trees, the one thing that did come up was what exactly the fence was gonna, uh, block out as far as how high it was gonna be for the larger trucks in the back. And there was some comments about the natural grading that you weren't going to be changing and the way the building was gonna sit. And it would block out a lot of the trucks in the back. I, I know that Michael suggested maybe going out and taking a picture of where one of the larger trucks would be in the back of the property. Were you able to do that?
Uh, no, we, um, but we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, I guess, I guess my own view from when we got out there, the site visit once again proved to be very helpful. As you can tell, the, the property slopes up from Route nine to where Mark has the building paved out. And then what I, is not, uh, readily apparent from Route nine is when you get up there where the building is, that's sort of a plateau and the land falls away somewhat significantly back towards the western part of the property, back to that tree line. And, uh, which I had not realized before. And it gives me the impression that with the wood fence proposing to put in, as well as the existing, uh, trees and hedgerow along the southern side, I think it's gonna do a better job of obscuring those trucks than we had thought. I think we were all sort of going under the impression that the lot was more or less level and that the, uh, the only obscuring, um, would be from fencing themselves. But the topography has something to say with that and I think is, uh, has a more significant impact on that than I had realized.
Yeah, Michael, so.
Wouldn't, I'm sorry, Mark?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll let you finish.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I'm glad it's not going to be a privacy fence because that would just be another special use permit. I think it still does the job of obscuring those trucks unless you walk right up to the fence and, and look at the little gap. Um, I, uh, was quite honestly relieved when I saw the terrain of the property, uh, because I do believe the terrain itself is going to be significant assistance in terms of obscuring the view of the trucks in the back. Um, that was, this was my main, my main sort of takeaway from our site visit.
Okay, yeah, so Michael, the, so the, the, the west side of that parking area in the rear is at elevation 156. And so then the finished floor elevation of the building is 160, right? And then, and then you have the building elevated from there. So there's already a four foot drop from the, uh, from the, you know, from the front of the building, uh, to the, to the most westerly portion of that parking area. So there is, you know, it's a four foot change in elevation, lower.
I, I think that is definitely going to help, uh, with the screening of the project. Other questions, comments, the members of the planning board?
Uh, there was a discussion about space being rented in the building. Is that still the plan?
Uh, yes, it is. And there's, uh, uh, you know, I would say, uh, you know, a- along with Mike's tree service, there's, uh, intended u- additional use for business or professional office.
So it would be office space. It would not be, uh, retail. Is that correct?
That's correct. And about a thousand square feet designated for office.
And then this is Jim. Um, we did ask Michelle to provide us with an updated determination on the, the two uses on the site and she did clarify that this was, uh, this is okay as, as proposed.
I know that Cole Dixon, oh, I believe was with us from the C A B. I don't know if anyone from the C A B is here to give their report. I, they submitted a written report certainly. I didn't see that they had any issues with this, but I thought, does anyone here would like to elaborate or had anything to that from the C A B? Okay, anyone from the public with questions or comments they'd like to share?
Michael, I have an additional question.
Uh huh.
Uh, of Melody. Melody, you had commented on the previous elevations.
Uh huh.
Um, what is your thinking on the changes? Have they alleviated your concerns?
Uh, yes, substantially. I think they've moved in a good direction. Is it my understanding that the first floor is going to be the rental space and the offices, bikes will be on the second floor?
Correct.
Okay. Um, no, I, I think this is better. It's a little hard to know about the parking without knowing the type of business that will be inside and how much traffic might be generated by that business. Um, so that to me still remains unanswered question. In terms of a high volume of people going in and out every day and having to cross that entrance road, um, you know, we talked a little bit about maybe flipping it, but I, I see it remains the same. So I do think there are just some pedestrian issues that still concern me a little bit. But as the architecture, you know, has become, in my opinion, much more barn-like and, um, you know, I drove down there the other day looking at some of the buildings along there, including the new visitor center for the fairgrounds and was trying to think about the architecture in that strip. And I, I do think this has improved.
May I, may I offer a personal opinion on, on the stone veneer? I, my own view is that it does not enhance the, the building.
I, I think what's happening is that the stone veneer is going horizontally and I think, I agree with Edna that it interrupts the verticality of, of the building. So, um,
It doesn't look like a foundation and so it's unclear what its purpose is.
And the door that's on the side facing north, is that the door that you enter to go to the Mike's offices on the second floor?
Correct. That would also allow him to enter into the, his, into the first floor part of his space as well.
Okay.
On the plan, I saw a shed, I believe it said 18 by 18. Have we gotten any other information on height and actual what that might look like? I'm assuming if it is, depending on the height, it would be quite visible from, if you're heading south, the building would be on your right.
Mike, are you, are you on?
I'm on.
Um, Mike, some details about the shed?
Uh, yeah, we, we drew it up at one point. I don't know if Steve has a copy of that. He can, that got sent over or not, but it had the same color scheme and similar architecture. It's just a very simple, uh, small shed. I guess that was the same coloration and it wasn't that tall either. I think it was eight feet plus the roof line, you know, of it. So maybe 10 or 11 feet tall, well, I mean, shorter than the truck.
Mark, on the north side of the building, where the one we were just looking at, the rendering with the door that goes in for the second floor, is there, I'm really having trouble seeing, is there like a little sidewalk there? Or what, what is running east and west along that facade?
So there's a short portion of sidewalk from the northeast corner to the door. And that's it. Just in that, in that small section through there, it used to extend the entire length that, and that's been truncated. It's just, uh, past that door, it's probably, uh, four to six feet past that door.
Why was it, why was it truncated, Mark?
Steve, can you?
We actually, i- in looking at it, um, it just didn't seem to make sense that it would, should run all the way to the end of the building.
Uh huh.
So we added some striping. We also felt with the trucks going in and out, uh, it's something else that we don't, it, it's, it's an obstacle as far as I'm concerned to, to bring the, the sidewalk all the way to the end of the building where people are not going to be typically walking. Um, for the most part, are, uh, the, the parking out front is for the, the office space out front and people are going to be heading towards the front of the building, not really walking along the side of the fence and then down the side. So, um, so we thought taking that out, we could stripe it and it still gives us an aisle way if pedestrians are back there to walk up against the building, but not necessarily a, an elevated curb for, for somebody to step up and down onto or off of.
And so, I mean, I was looking at it and wondering about the opportunity to, um, soften that facade a little bit with landscaping, but it doesn't, it's some low shrubs or something that just breaks up the mass of that, that long bay, which clearly is what it is. I'm just offering that as a comment.
Okay.
This is, uh, Jim from Planning for Places. A quick question from, now that I look at it closer, the, um, that, that sidewalk area looks to be elevated. Have you, in, in the other area isn't that goes into the front door? Have you considered or maybe it's just the illusion of it? Um, ADA accessibility to get into Mike's through that door?
Well, yeah, well, it will have, uh, ADA accessibility, Jim.
Ramps, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Well, Jim, just so you, the ramp is built in. If you look at the, let's say that would be the east, the northeast corner, right there where you're pointing. Um, that is a flat section of sidewalk and then as you walk towards the doors, it starts to slope up alongside the building to get into, to get up to the slab elevation, the finished floor elevation.
For both the front and the side door? Definitely for, I see it for the front. It just, it looks funny. Maybe it's just the way the shadowing is, is, um, for the side door, it just didn't look like there was a ramp up.
Yeah, no, at this point, there is not a ramp up to that side door.
Okay, so how, how would someone get into Mike's? Would they go through the front doors to get to his business?
They, they could do that, but an elevator is not required for this space. So handicap access to the upstairs is not required.
Yeah, that's just thinking to get in the, in the door into the downstairs, I guess.
Well, if, if you look at the plan, you get into that door, it's just a hallway.
Okay.
And then you go through another door to get to the back of his, his shop.
Right.
So i- if someone were to get into here, I mean, the back doors and the other side door are also at slab elevation if somebody needed to get in there, um, otherwise.
Okay, I, yeah, I trust you'll, you'll have the, the ADA requirements as needed. I'm not an ADA specialist, such long, sure that was, you know, make, make sure you're addressing that is, is needed.
We definitely will. Thank you.
Okay, it seems like one of the thoughts that seems to be somewhat popular is, um, to lose the stone facade along the front and just basically have the front, uh, look the same way as the sides do with the, uh, sort of board and batten type approach going right down to the, uh, well, to the, to the bit of concrete that you have, because I think it's, Edna points out, she's quite right, it's clearly not the foundation. Uh, so it really doesn't have a function other than aesthetic, but it does tend to break up the aesthetic look of the, of what would be more of a barn-like building with the board and batten going all the way down to the ground.
Correct. It is aesthetic. It's something our client was partial to, I'm sure. If, if it meant, you know, getting an approval or not, we could probably take it out without a problem.
And I think in terms of trying to do plantings along the side there, I really don't think there's enough space there for proper root growth. I think would tend to be somewhat of a heat sink too. So I think it would be very difficult to keep plants of any, of any stature alive in that area, particularly once you come to cloud, snow and things like that in the winter.
Yeah, I, I agree. I suspected that.
Yeah, all, all our landscaping has taken, you know, part in the, the east and then the, the north and south ends of the property.
Okay. That's fine. I'm satisfied.
Other, other issues here that members of the planning board still need to be addressed?
No.
Oh.
You guys covered it.
Is there anything that we've discussed tonight that we haven't had a resolution of in terms of dealing with the applicant and the applicant's representative that anyone feels, uh, would prevent us from considering an approval resolution this evening?
What is the Z B A referral later?
Uh, so meet with the Z, oh, I'm sorry, was that to me or to Jim?
Well, to anybody.
Whoever knows.
Should I go, Jim, or you, you got this?
It's all yours, Mark. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so, uh, we've already, uh, so, uh, following the last meeting with the planning board, we had, uh, an initial meeting with the Z B A. And so, uh, at the beginning of, uh, the presentation, I mentioned that application's been made to the Z B A. So this, uh, particular zoning district is a community business south with a required front yard setback of 60 feet. We're, uh, proposing 45.3 or something like that, 45.3 feet. So it's an area variance, a little less than 15 feet that's being requested. And so that, uh, the, the Z B A accepted the application and we are scheduled to meet with the Z B A on, uh, the, uh, April. Oh gosh, I just got the, I just got the notice today. Hang on a second. We're meeting the Z B A on April, April 21st. Uh, so we have a hearing with the Z B A on April 21st, uh, for consideration of that area variance.
So is the area variance needed prior to our approval?
We could do a conditional approval as we do sometimes the variance request that, uh, I can't stamp and sign until the variance has been granted by the Z B A. That could be one of the conditions allowing me to stamp and sign the final site plan.
It's not commonly the way we approach it.
There's some Z B A there, area variances. It has been. For mo- more serious issues like health department approval and things like that, no, it's, that's different. But since we know that you're going to be on in April, but generally the Z B A will then have a resolution at their following meeting, would be their main meeting.
Um, correct.
So I, there's really, um, do we have a, Gretchen, do we have a second main meeting after the Z B A meeting in May?
On the 17th.
Z B A is gonna meet on the 19th.
So.
Right, Z B A meets third Wednesday, right?
Yeah, I think so.
And we meet on, so we'd be on the 17th. so we'd be on the seventeenth.
So we would, the, our first June meeting would be the first time we could take up an approval resolution for waiting on the ZBA. Is that, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Well, certainly wouldn't hold up, you know, the project to any great extent, because you do need the variance before we could give the approval. Is the feeling the planning board members, you know, consensus that they would like to wait until the ZBA has acted before we, uh, take up an approval resolution. Anyone would not like to do that or does not see the need to do that?
I would like to do it and I have one additional question, is there any revealed foundation on this building? It, it's unclear in the elevations that I've been looking at.
When you say, um, revealed foundations, is there any concrete exposed above the, the grade around the building?
Yes, my question.
Yes, the code requires eight inches minimum, uh, to wood. So, uh, because it's going to be a wood frame structure, you will see that, so if you look on this elevation here, we have a six inch, we have a six inch walk and then another six inches of concrete, so, towards the back section, you might see twelve inches of that concrete, of the concrete exposed.
And I'm looking at the side door and it was, it's cut through the foundation wall, correct?
The side door is, will be cut through the foundation wall, correct?
Okay, ju- just a question, is it worth considering putting the veneer stone on the foundation rather than in the front of the building up to the window?
Well, it's such a small area. You know.
It would be distracting.
You know, typically something like this, we would just pull the forms off and rub the foundation or purge it if it's blocked, we haven't, we haven't gone that far as we're waiting for approvals before we, uh, start final drawing.
Okay. Would you consider removing it from the front?
Mike?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be fine with not having the front, I think I agree with, uh, everyone who says their opinions about that, I think it would probably look better without the.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
I think it will improve the appearance. Well, I get the impression that the consensus of the board is to, uh, convene on this, on this, um, application at our first June meeting.
Michael?
Yes.
Oh, I, I, I was hoping that you guys would possibly consider voting on it tonight. Uh, making it contingent upon our zoning board approval, um, at the last zoning board meeting, they seemed very positive. Uh, and they had a good outlook towards this project. We're hoping that if we can get i- an approval tonight, then I can speak with my client who would like to start building as soon as possible. Uh, we could possibly start doing that process now. Whereas i- if you guys don't, if you guys don't take the move on it tonight, we're going to suggest we wait until June for us to start moving forward with our drawings, which is just gonna, you know, it's gonna make us wait another, you know, two months or so, month and a half. And considering we can't do anything without that zoning board approval as contingent for the planning board approval, I was hoping we would, uh, get that done if possible.
Well, I, I understand where you're coming from, it seems that the consensus of the planning board is to wait until the ZBA has acted.
Oh, I.
Disagrees with that, you know, members of the planning board, please, please speak up.
Why does it have to be June?
Because the ZBA meeting in May is after our second May meeting.
Uh-huh.
So if we're waiting for the ZBA to act, we can't act until June.
We, we are, we are very fortunate in that when we close a public hearing, we have a resolution ready to go. So we can take two actions at the same meeting, the zoning board of appeals has a different approach. And they close the public hearing and then they schedule the resolution for the meeting after that, so there's always that, fortunately.
And actually technically they have sixty-two days to act.
Right.
Close of the.
Yeah, but they're pretty good about turning it around, I mean.
Usually, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the rhythm they've gotten into and it's the way they do business.
Um, I believe that we are not asking to see any additional work, is that correct?
That's my understanding, well, would basically, I'm sorry, Melody?
Well, no, we're not waiting to see any additional work, we can assume what the, what the building will look like with the change in the, the front facade. But if the, there will be changes if the zoning board of appeals does not approve the resolution before them, is that correct? There'll have to be changes?
There would have to be changes, but there's no penalty to the applicant.
No, no, but then it would, it would have to be revised.
Yes, it would.
On the other hand, if the ZBA approves, then they're ready to go.
Yes.
I would be ready to approve tonight, I wonder how everybody feels about this, has everyone spoken on this?
Anyone object to considering an approval resolution tonight, realizing that any approval will be contingent upon the ZBA approving the, uh, front setback variance?
And it would preclude, would it not, Mike, Michael, I'm sorry, I don't know which gentleman was speaking as to what they could do in the interim while they're waiting on the ZBA approval, but.
They were discussing doing final drawings, final plans, things like that, they can't do any work on the site.
They cannot.
They can do no work on the site until I stamp and sign and they get a building permit from Ed. And it would permit them, as Steve says, to know that they have approval from us and to go ahead and do the other work at a risk that they might have to revise it if the ZBA says no. But if they're willing to take that risk, that's, you know, their decision.
Or, or if there's something in the ZBA approval that precludes what we have approved tonight, I, i- it just feels a little iffy to me, but if everyone else wants to go along with it, all right.
Well, if that were to happen, then they would have to come back to the planning board, correct?
They would.
If it's simply approved as proposed, then they would not have to come back.
Correct, if, if the ZBA simply grants the variance, um, without any conditions that would be counted anything that has been presented to us tonight, then once they get the variance and let me know, I can stamp and sign their final site plan and they can go ahead and get a building permit.
In, in addition to the health department and DOT.
Right.
Uh, there's an awful lot of things that are unresolved, including the health.
Agreed.
And if it were just one, maybe I'd be convinced, but with all three of them still outstanding, I don't like to have us break so completely with what's been our protocol.
I agree.
That's, you, now that you mention it, Melody, that's a good point. So it looks like we're going to try to reschedule this to our first June meeting. Gretchen, if you could tell me what that day is and what time you'd like to have it on the agenda?
June seventh at six thirty-five.
Okay, six thirty-five. And I'm sure by then DOT and health department approval will be in hand and also it would, sounds very much like the ZBA will be, uh, um, also approving the variance. Could I hear a move to continue this public hearing to June seventh at six thirty-five, please?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Uh, uh, Michael?
Yes.
Just one thing, in, in the event that, um, it's, so our meeting with ZBA on, in, in the event that they requested a change, I, I want to have the ability to go do an earlier meeting to present that change to the planning board.
We, we could certainly do that, it would be probably our first May meeting.
Right, and so I just didn't want it locked into June, h- how can we do that so we have flexibility if we have to go back to the planning board earlier?
What we could do is continue this until our first May meeting. And then recognizing we'd be continuing it to our first June meeting before we could take up an approval resolution.
Okay.
That, that's a, that's a safe way of doing it because at least have a spot on agenda.
Yeah, have it on the agenda and then, and then obviously can, uh, we can update the board and, and, you know, of course at this time not anticipating, based on our original meeting with the ZBA, not anticipating any changes, but, um, you know, we made a few, uh, based on this meeting and so that information will get to the, you know, we'll get that to the ZBA, but I just wanted that, thank you.
Okay.
Gretchen, for our first May meeting, when would we be scheduling this?
Uh, six fifty, uh, on May third.
May third, okay. All right.
And Michael?
You need a motion for that?
I, I'll make the, I'll amend my original motion to include both dates.
And will someone amend the, uh, second?
I'll amend in second vote.
Thank you, Sean.
Michael?
Yes.
Just in case that the, uh, the DOT and health department approvals aren't done, would they be conditions of the final site plan approval come June?
It could be done, but I would imagine, given the time involved, that unless there's a problem with either the DOT or the health department, you should, you should have those approvals by June.
I expect them.
Yeah, I would be very surprised if you don't.
Okay.
I think at May, at the May meeting, we can get sort of a where we are discussion. And get an idea of there's, if there's going to be any delay and for what reason those delays might occur.
So just out of curiosity, are, are we, if the ZBA approves our submission, would anybody be, would we show up for the early May meeting, would, would, would anybody be here to, to represent come May if there's no changes to be made?
You, you would.
Certainly can. Um, we have to open the public hearing, you, you know, if you have nothing you want to say, then, you know, we'll then just continue it to the June meeting.
Okay, okay. Okay.
We have a motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. So, Will, we won't see you on May third at six thirty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next public hearing is Scott Lyons, uh, from Minor Subdivision, it's been requested that we reschedule this one to May third at six forty. Uh, there's still, I guess, uh, one of the people involved in it passed away a few weeks ago. And I think they're trying to sort out what they want to do, so, um, could I hear a motion to reschedule Scott Lyons to May third at six forty, please?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our final public hearing of Blue Brindle LLC, Acrotic Road Site Plan Special Use Permit for Single Family Dwelling Garage Pool and Pool House.
Hello, I'm Michelle Zerfus with Burger Engineering, representing the applicant, Dyer and Cave is also on this call, and the architect, Virg Young, is also on here. Since our last meeting, they did the archaeological phase one A and one B, and those were found to show that there was no, they found no pre, pre-con, pre-history contact information. The ZBA is all set and ready to go, they just need your approval, so I believe everything is met at this point.
Okay, can you point out, um, I believe you've increased the tree removal?
The area disturbed, got a little bit bigger.
Okay.
Let's see, it's probably on the, it'll be on the plan with the road control.
Yeah, I think I have it up right now, just let me zoom in, just takes a second. Is it shown by this, uh, kind of jagged line here?
Yes, and it, over in the area of the pool house.
Right, okay.
Which would be to the right what you've got there, that's the main house, the pool house is to the right. And it was just a shift, a slight shift a little bit farther to the top of the page, which is the east. Okay, so a little bit farther over, or well, you might see it, I, but it's, it's just to the east of the pool house or to the, at the orientation of the drawing to above the pool house.
Okay.
It's, uh, north is to the left. So it was just a small amount of tree removal, extra tree removal that would, that was being proposed.
Right, for those who are looking, it's, it's, it's shown by this jagged line, so everything inside of this would be the area of tree removal generally.
Right, but that, that was, most of that's already been done.
Right, 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 just letting everyone know, that's, that's where the line is proposed currently.
The area disturbance, and not all of the area had trees.
I don't believe there are other questions, I know the one thing we're waiting on is just the final review from the town engineer on your response to him. But we can make his sign off a condition of my stamping and signing. We can approve your application tonight, and that's just a condition of, before I can stamp and sign, receiving his sign off letter. I don't believe there was anything else outstanding, um, Jim or anyone on the board?
Uh, no, Michael, Mike, I believe my comments have all been addressed at this point, I think we're good.
Anyone on the board have any additional questions? Okay, well, what I will do is ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Edna, second?
Second, Elise.
Thanks, Delise, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, I have a resolution to read and maybe I'll get through it before I get dropped again. Okay, the town of Randic Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Blue Brindle LLC for site plan and special use permit in your tow town code chapter one two five for construction of a home detached garage pool and pool house in the RC five rural countryside zoning district. We refer to imposed action as type two under seeker, which coordinated environmental quality reviews precluded. Based upon review of submitted information including for some planning board members and C A B members on their site visits to the project property, we find that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter one two five. With respect to the application for special use permit authorized work, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in town code chapter one two five, section six seven, and grant requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval for the planning board. Despite the application for site plan approval, we find proposed work and intended use to be consistent with town code chapter one two five and approve the application inclusive of materials by Burger Engineering and Surveying, including an overall site plan and lighting plan documents dated January eleventh, twenty twenty-one revised March first, twenty twenty-one, and accompanying lighting cut sheets elevations by Serge Young dated one six twenty-one phase one archaeological investigation by Harding and Archaeological Associates, Inc. dated March twenty twenty-one and other associated supporting documents. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant satisfaction of the below conditions under requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified in town code chapter one two five except as may be modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing distribution requirements. Receipt of a sign off letter from the town engineer on comments between the town engineer and the applicant regarding engineering issues with the application. Any would have any outstanding fees and or reimbursable amounts due to town of Randic related to the review and processing of applications subject to this resolution. And receipt of all approvals, authorizations or certifications required herein or for any other town, county or state or other agency as required to undertake under the proposed actions, the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Edna.
Second, Elise.
Could I hear a second, please? I'm sorry, who did the second?
Elise.
Delise, thank you, Delise. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will poll the board. Elise?
Hi.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Uh, me, aye.
You forgot, Edna.
I got everybody. Oh, Edna, I'm sorry, Edna.
I said, aye.
Thank you. I didn't see your name listed here and I got lost. Okay, uh, the application is approved. All we, all I need from you guys is the final site plan with all the information on it as uh, discussed here in the app, in the resolution of approval. And we should expect the sign off shortly from our town engineer on the comments that you sent in that they answered all of his issues. So once you get that stamped and signed, you can get a building permit to proceed.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, our next area, our next item of business is an update on the Rockledge project. You have, you know, three new members of Delise, Joe and Sean, I think you're all pretty new to this. I don't think you've really had an opportunity to get into this one. And what we're going to do tonight is, uh, basically they're going to run through this for, for you and for us to get a refresher on this. And we're going to schedule, resume the public hearing, uh, at a date that, who, at a date, um, overturning at seven P M. Uh-oh, is that?
May third.
May third at seven P M. When we will then also be taking public comment. So whoever, Mark, uh, whoever's going to be doing just the run through for us to bring us up to speed.
Yep, Jim, I unmuted now. I didn't say too much. Thanks for bringing that up. So, um, you know, for the, for the, you know, and Michael, I'll take your lead on this for the, for the new members, uh, on the planning board. It's, uh, there's been so many, uh, you know, this, this project has evolved over the years. And so not to, you know, uh, extend the, our time tonight too long. What's the, I mean, should I take it through a, a quick, you know, discussion of what the project is?
Yeah, Mark, that would be good because then at the public hearing, you know, you'll be giving a more detailed discussion for, you know, public comment and whatnot. And it might be helpful if, if, you know, uh, our new members are amenable to schedule a site visit so they can, you know, walk the property area with you and really get a feel for, uh, what's, what's going on, you know, getting and seeing the site, uh, is very, very different than just than having, you know, a, a review such as this. I mean, actually see the building, see the site, see the terrain and, and see where all this is going to be happening.
Uh, absolutely. I think that, well, that was one of my comments is that for, you know, especially for the new members and of course for any of the, uh, members of the board that have, you know, uh, would like to go back and, and take a look at the site. So I, I'll just start with, you know, the, the reason that we're back. And so, uh, you know, just starting with materials that have been, uh, submitted, uh, you know, with part of this for, for discussion for tonight. Uh, there's, you know, the, uh, final redevelopment of the, of the site plans and there's, uh, you know, there are twelve, there are twelve sheets, uh, to the site plans, uh, taking through, you know, the various, uh, details of the project. Just stepping back a bit, you know, the, just for the new members, uh, this particular project, um, requires site plan and special permit approval, uh, from, from the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. It also requires, uh, a ZBA approval from the, uh, Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals, which, which I'll get into. And, uh, approval from the, uh, New York State D E C, uh, the Duchess County Department of Health. And, uh, I think that's it as far as, um, regulatory approvals. Uh, there's also, you know, approvals related to, uh, some of the historic aspects of the, of the project also. But in just, you know, quick summary, uh, for the board and the members, um, you know, the application is to ultimately, uh, develop, uh, thirty-six condominium units that are going to be located on three separate parcels. And so that leads to the site plan, uh, permit requirement. Uh, this property is located, um, on the, uh, on the west side of, uh, Acrotop Road. And, uh, the, uh, and, and it would be also on the, um, on the north side of, um, Hagerty Hill Road and it's Primrose Hill, Hagerty, Hagerty Hill Road. Uh, so it's actually on the north side of Primrose Hill and it also a little bit on Hagerty Hill. Uh, the total parcel size is a little more than, uh, hundred, it's a hundred and thirty-five point eight-two-four acres. Uh, as I mentioned, it's, uh, uh, this proposal is for a creation of thirty-six condominium units and what it, and the creation of those units is going to be by, um, creation of three parcels, um, associated with the project. And the reason for the creation of those three parcels and subdivision is to utilize the existing historic structures, uh, that are located on the property. And, um, utilizing those historic structures for creating, creation of some, some new condominium units. And then, and, and actually, uh, it's going to be, it's going to be a total of eight units associated with the historic structures with the balance of those, um, units being, uh, new, new buildings, um, associated with the project. Uh, you know, access will be, there's, uh, um, existing, um, uh, roadways through the, uh, through this parcel. And Jim, I, I don't know what happened on this particular PDF, but there's.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's locking up on me a little bit. I was trying to zoom in.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, and so, uh, access to, access to the property, uh, is twofold. There's an existing access, uh, located in the northern portion of the property. Um, and that's going to be the primary access. There's also, um, uh, something a little bit to the south where Jim has his arrow now, which is also an existing access, but it's only going to be, in this case, going to be used for emergency access because of some limited sightline, uh, requirements, uh, or sightline restrictions in that. And, um, and then, you know, the choice has been not to improve that for, um, you know, regular ingress and egress, but to use it emergency access just to avoid any, uh, additional site disturbance and removal of, uh, trees associated with it. And, uh, the call of the project is to, you know, utilize as much as the existing infrastructure, in this case, roadways, uh, to access the buildings, but, um, the development of the condominium units, uh, that are being proposed here. Uh, new roadways are going to be neat, are, are needed to be, uh, developed and constructed, uh, to access those, uh, the condominium, uh, unit complexes. And those are shown, uh, you know, basically the new, the new units are shown basically on the southern portion of the property where Jim is, uh, circling, circling now. Uh, you know, I mentioned the, uh, uh, some of the development will be associated with existing historic structures. And so if you move to the north a little bit on the, it'd be the westerly side, there's a, a building labeled the manor house. And that manor house is, uh, ultimately, uh, going to, well, it's the, th- this is where the ZBA proposal comes in. Um, it's, it's being proposed that six units are going to be placed in that building. Based on the zoning code, four are allowed, uh, but in this case, an application has been made to the ZBA uh, for area variance to allow six units to be located in that building. And then if you go almost due east of that, there's another building, uh, Jim circling that he's, yeah, right there now. Um, uh, that building, uh, has the proposal of two, uh, two condominium units located in it. So a total of eight, um, which is allowed by zoning, four per lot, which also gets into the, uh, the reason for, uh, the subdivision of the property is to create separate parcels, uh, for those historic structures. So that, uh, uh, it allows an adaptive reuse of those historic, historic structures as part of the, as part of the application. You know, as, as the board members can see, there's, um, uh, just through this, through this site plan, uh, there are several wetlands, uh, that are located on the property. And those wetlands have been, uh, considered in part of the, uh, you know, development of the project and, um, you know, and so associated improvements to be respectful of those wetlands. The larger wetland, let, wetland F is a New York State D E C wetland. The balance of the wetlands on the property are Army Corps wetlands. Uh, and then obviously those are here under the jurisdiction of the town of Rhinebeck based on their zoning code. Just for the other board members, the, the, the rationale and development of the density for the project is based on a formula in the zoning code, uh, the net, uh, based on net density. And so in that net density calculation, that's how, uh, the, you know, the total number of units, uh, was, uh, determined, uh, for this particular project. I won't go into all those details now. I'm happy to, um, elaborate that on the site meeting with the new board members if they'd like to do that. Um, in addition to, um, you know, utilizing, uh, the existing, uh, historic structures on the property. There's also, um, uh, what exists is, is a, an existing central water supply, an existing sewer, and, and an existing sewage treatment plant. Um, that was, uh, uh, developed on the property, which was, uh, most recently, it was, it was previously owned by Daytop and Daytop, uh, utilized the central water system and, uh, uh, treatment plant with, uh, surface, uh, first surface disposal of the wastewater, uh, for their needs. That, uh, what's being proposed for this project is to utilize that existing, uh, those existing systems, um, uh, for, um, for development of the condominium. One of the reasons that this, uh, uh, project has, um, has been extended a bit was that, uh, the, uh, the groundwater supply, uh, for the, for this project needed to be investigated. And so we have now finalized our investigation with, um, and, and it's actually involved the redevelopment of the existing wells that existed on the property. And we went through a, a, an exploration program, looking at other, uh, locations of the property, but ultimately decided that it was best to redevelop, uh, the existing water supplies, uh, or excuse me, the existing wells that are located on the property. And so through that, we have now determined that, um, we have adequate, uh, source capacity for the project. And that, uh, the criteria is based on the requirements of both the New York State Department of Health and, you know, in this case, the Duchess County Department of Health, uh, taking the lead on the, uh, on the requirements for the development of that water supply. Um, and one of the things that was, uh, uh, developed as part of that was not only ensuring that, um, water supply was adequate on site, but also that it did not affect any of the neighboring properties. So, uh, quite extensive, uh, groundwater, uh, exploration, analysis done, uh, to, uh, you know, an extended pumping test on the testing wells and also monitoring, uh, off-site wells for adjoining neighbors. So the adjoining neighbors were, uh, contacted and given the opportunity, uh, for the consultants, for the groundwater consultants retained, retained by the, uh, uh, retained by Rockledge, uh, to do that. And so the, um, all those, uh, adjoining wells that, um, they were monitored, uh, during the, during the extended pumping test on site. And all those r- results are, uh, compiled, logged and now summarized. And so, um, that, that, um, analysis and summary is complete. And I am expecting, um, that information to be, uh, provided, memorialized and provided to me, uh, within the next week. And so upon receipt of that, uh, I'll certainly provide that, uh, information to the town planning board. With regard to the, uh, existing wa- wastewater treatment facility, um, just awaiting some of the information for, um, the water supply. Uh, just determine, um, some of the modifications that, uh, may be required to the existing treatment facilities. Uh, the same, actually the same with the water supply, uh, with that groundwater exploration program. A quality test, not, not only for quantity, but quality testing was also done, uh, just to determine any final, uh, design for, uh, for the, for the water system. And also with wastewater treatment, the, um, the applicant has already been in touch with New York State D E C to continue uh, discharge, uh, surface discharge from the existing treatment plant, uh, by, um, actually, uh, reobtaining, uh, a speedy discharge from it. There, there was an existing permit for discharge that expired. So, um, new application is required for, uh, discharge of the, of the sanitary waste from the project. And, uh, materials have already been provided to D, D E C and they've already determined, uh, what the discharge standards are, are required for, uh, for this particular project. Um, in addition to handling, you know, onsite infrastructure that I've just discussed, an extensive traffic analysis was also done, uh, for the site and, uh, the, um, through previous applications. You know, various concerns have been addressed by the, uh, traffic consultant and those materials are, uh, have been made available to the town. In addition, uh, with this last, um, submission, most recent submission, uh, made to the planning board, a, um, a phase one archaeological investigation, uh, prepared and, uh, dated and, uh, prepared by Harkin Archaeological, uh, associates, uh, has been, copies of those have been, uh, submitted, uh, to the town and all the, the, uh, all the field testing is complete in the areas of proposed disturbance for the project. Um, in addition, uh, to the, uh, to the site plans, uh, that, that, that I developed, uh, the, um, app, the applicant also retained, uh, Brooks Farm Group to do, um, uh, landscaping, uh, analysis and design, uh, for the project. And then also, uh, that also included a, um, provided copies to the board for a cultural landscape approach, um, that, uh, that was also prepared by Brooks Farm. I'll, I'll also note for the new board members that, um, and some of those, uh, associated with AIPAC, um, when Charles Bernbaum was, um, was in Rhinebeck, uh, looking at various sites, um, we did do a site visit at this particular property. And, um, the, the plans that you see in front of you now are, are the, are basically the same as, as the plans that, which he saw. He had one minor suggestion for changes, uh, to the project. It was just removal, actually removal of the existing structure, which has been included, with the, with the project, but that's, uh, that's been, uh, addressed by, uh, the Brooks Farm Group in a copy entitled Cultural Landscape Approach uh, for this, for the, uh, for this project. Uh, there's, there's also been, uh, a variety of, um, architectural, uh, designs and, um, you know, footprints and floor plans that are on file with the town. And those, no new materials have been submitted. And so those are on record and those have been reviewed for in, in previous meetings. One of the or two of the items that were discussed was the, you know, the development of the existing historic structures. And so specific materials have been previously submitted with regard to those two buildings. And also have, you know, the basis of the, as I mentioned before, the area variance application in front of the, of the town ZBA. Let's see. Oh, one thing that, oh, and also the item that was on, was on my table was development of stormwater pollution prevention plan. That is, is complete. Have been in touch with the, directly in touch with the town, the town's engineering consultant. And just having some dialogue now about the specifics of that design. In my transmittal letter to the, the town, I I spared them all the detailed information related to the SWIP. It's probably about four inches of material copy to, to present. And just want to get through the details with Ray Jukowski of CPL before providing a final document to the town. And then also, I'm just going to separate out all the calculations associated it and just have a, have a, you know, a, a summary document that can be distributed among the town planning board members. I think that, that's it.
Okay. I guess a couple of questions came up, but one was who is Charles Bernbaum? Charles Bernbaum basically is a landscape architect, researcher, teacher who basically has established, created and established the whole understanding of how to preserve the historic landscapes that we still have existing in this country. He worked on the Vanderbilt estate, for example. And he has worked with us now with Rhinebeck. Well, he's helping us with this project, with the Grassmere Project, with the elements of the old Astor Estate that are being redeveloped at this point, with the intent of trying to identify the significant landscape aspects of those old river estates and how they can be preserved, redeveloped, it can still take place to reuse, but how you can preserve their key elements so that for future generations, they'll be able to still get a sense of, okay, what was it like when these places were private residences, were private estates? And his help has been incredibly invaluable to us in dealing with these historic properties. Prior to that, it was, the landscapes really were often overlooked. And clearly, I think in the Hudson Valley, we all recognize they're one of the key elements that make this place, you know, so desirable to live here. Another question came up, Mark, about would there be any opportunity for neighbors to either join a tour of the property or perhaps something could be set up to help them out so that they could basically see what's being presented? Is that something that would be possible?
Absolutely, Michael. And I, yes, that's, that's certainly, certainly happy to walk the neighbors through the property.
Okay.
It would be preferable if the site visit is separate from an invitation for neighbors?
You know, also, I might add that, and I know Matt Rudikoff is also on this Zoom meeting. You know, Matt, Matthew has, you know, developed, and, and once again, these are the new board members, extensive environmental analysis on the site and all those, you know, documents are, you know, on file with the town, not, you know, town planning board, not necessarily included in the, in our most recent submission.
I think there was another question came up about, at some point, would floor plans be available for the, for the different, different units?
You know, certainly, project architect is Scott Dutton. I don't know if Scott's on this call, but you can certainly, you know, reach out to Scott and make sure that, you know, all information is available to the board members.
Okay.
Mark, this is Jim, just really quickly, you said it, but I just want to be clear, the, the ZBA application that you have in does not increase or change the allowed or permitted density at all. It's merely transferring units from one structure to another.
That's correct. And thank you for the clarification of that. It's, so it's, so town code allows through, through, through their adaptive reuse section of the town code allows four units to be developed per lot. And so the zoning here, it's five acre zoning. And so what Jim shows is the site plan. There's also a subdivision plan that's associated with this, with this project or this package, I should say. And so that's, so hence the reason for creation of three separate parcels. So two of those parts, each one of those historic structures is, is on its own legal parcel. And so code allows four units per lot. But in this case, because of the size of, for example, the Manor House, which I mentioned for, in the, in the, when Jim and I were going through that, it's a larger structure. So it's, it's more appropriate to have six units in that structure. And then the stone, the stone cottage on the eastern portion of the property closer to Akron Hook Road is more appropriate for two. So once again, town code allows eight because there's two separate lots. In this case, eight are being proposed, but six is on one lot and two are located on another lot.
And Mark, Mark, this is Matt Rudikoff. And what you're not saying explicitly is that in order to put the four units in the, in this, in the chapel or the stone barn down close to the Akron Hook Road, that would take an extension of that building, which would be more visible from the road and would have a greater impact on the character of the neighborhood.
Okay.
Michael, where, did I, you know, I know I'm last on the agenda. Everyone's tired. So I try to as possible.
So this was, this was very good. I think that would it be possible? How would you like to work out setting up the tour with, with the residents? What would be the easiest way to do that for all concerned?
So I think I'd like to talk to, you know, the team, the project team about that, how to, how to set that up. And then I would obviously, you know, I, I've been in touch with a few neighbors, like across the street of Kara's, I can reach out or whether or not they, they can, you know, they, you know, if I have one contact, if, if you know, I just have one contact with the neighbors and then obviously be able to coordinate that with the project team.
Okay.
Mark, this is I was just gonna say, maybe, maybe I'll, I'll help work with you to coordinate the, the planning board, HAPAC site visit. Since we may have a number of, of members that are going to want to attend. So I'll try, I'll, I can help you out with that if you want. We'll catch up offline.
Great, Jim. Thank you. Yeah. So I'll, I'll court, I'll rally up with, with, you know, the project team and then coordinate with you.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to do is actual, actually schedule the resumption of the public hearing. I want to emphasize at that time, everyone who has questions, concerns, comments, whatever, will be more than welcome to share them with all of us. Tonight was just to try to bring everyone back up to speed, remember where we all were. And for our new members to at least get a sense of what, what they're going to be reviewing and being asked to speak about. So having said so, if I could hear a resolution to resume this public hearing on May 3rd at 7:00 PM.
So moved, Melody. Delise, second.
Thank you, Delise. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Very good. And once again, we'll be noticing going out as it did originally, since we're resuming it. So the noticing has to be taken care of again. So you'll all be receiving notices about this. Those of you who are, were received notices prior to this, you'll be receiving them again for the resumption of the public hearing. Mark, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
Brought back lots of memories. So take care.
Take care.
Good night, everyone.
So our last items are referrals, which are always fun. These are from the zoning enforcement officer for possible HAPAC referral. And Jim sort of giving us a little summary of each one of these, of these two referrals. And all I have to do is find them. Okay. The first one is for interior, interior renovations to demolish two walls inside the structure installation of a wood stove. The house is listed as historic. It's generally been our policy for interior work like this that we do not get involved. It's not something that we feel is within the purview of the planning board unless it's a situation such as what we're having right now with Rockledge, for example, where it's an adaptive reuse of buildings for basically, you know, a commercial type purpose that, you know, they're doing condominiums. So it's usually our feeling, if anyone feels differently, that this is something we would not recommend sending the HAPAC. And Jim has provided us with the following resolution on this one. The town of Bryant Planning Board, a power referral by the zoning administration of a building permit submitted by Jennifer LaBelle and Ross Shane for interior renovations. One finds that the interior renovations are not reviewed typically under the purview of the planning board. Two, does not have any comments on proposed project. And three recommends that the interior projects not be forward for consideration. For, that be heard by the planning board for consideration by the HAPAC. And that the draft lobby amended, removed these referral requirements. Such referrals created unnecessary hurdle and delay for applicants. That sounds like a satisfactory resolution. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Melody.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Application is for the installation of internal HA, HVAC heads and external HVAC condensers as part of a mini split system at 399 Mill Road. The applicant has provided a sketch showing that the two are approximately three feet, three feet by one and a half feet units will be placed at the back corner of the house, potentially visible from the road. These appear to be typical external residential units. In this case, because it is external to the building, this is probably one that we would refer to the HAPAC for expedited review as we did with that home at our last meeting on Ziffleberg Road. And what we have here is, we recommend that the planning board refer this application to the HAPAC for expedited review and submission of a finding and written comment, if any, to the zoning administrator and planning board secretary. If that sounds amenable, could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Melody.
Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. And our final one is from the ZBA. It's, it was from Michael's previous for the front yard setback variance. I think Michael did, Mark did a very good job of describing what it is and why it is. And I do have a resolution here I can read and decide what we want to do with this.
So Michael, with this one, I kind of left it open. I wasn't entirely, I wasn't entirely sure where everyone was going to want to go. So we can either do, you know, kind of the, the typical, you know, response that we have that it raises no significant planning environmental concerns and they rely on their own study of the facts. Or something else if, if people, the planning board feels that you wanted a different response. I just wasn't entirely sure which way we might go tonight on this one.
Okay.
So I don't know if there needs to be discussion on that or if everyone is generally comfortable going with our standard response if there are no issues.
Option one is we find that the variance raises no significant planning or environmental concerns. And we recommend that the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts. In deciding the application, in accordance with the criteria procedures set forth in Town Code Chapter 125 dash 27, including consideration of the input of neighboring property owners. That would be our normal resolution for a ZBA referral that we feel presents no planning issues. And need, any discussion on this one? Can I hear a motion to approve?
Yeah, I think our normal one is fine in this case, and I would make that motion.
Second?
A second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, that's all I have. I think I will let you know that John Lyons and Jim are going to be trying to put their heads together to set up the training sessions for planning board members that we discussed at an earlier meeting. Hopefully in, in the weeks, if perhaps months ahead, we'll be able to present those to, to the members of the planning board. And they'll also serve to provide us with the four hours of training that state law requires as planning board members that we take. That's all I have. Do you know, does anyone have anything they'd like to present tonight or any questions they'd like to bring up?
No.
This is Jim. Everyone, everyone heard we're scheduled for the site visit for next Friday. I will go about the same kind of path to schedule one for Rockledge as well. So then look up for some emails for scheduling on that. Thanks.
Yeah, but both of these properties are really phenomenal and hopefully they'll let you go in the front of the manor at Rockledge because it has a marble staircase that just is unbelievable. But it's really something to see. Okay. Could I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Melody.
Thank you, Edna. Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much. I know.